Good morning. This being the day and the hour fixed by the Act of Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter for the Organization of Council of the City of Pittsburgh for the 142nd Council will be in order. Before proceeding, I would like to call on Councilwoman Strausberger and Councilman Kraus to escort our Mayor-elect Gany into the chamber, please. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the flags, the Pledge of Allegiance, singing of the National Anthem, and the singing of America the Beautiful, and the invocation. The flags will be presented by the ROTC cadets of the Three Rivers Battalion at the University of Pittsburgh. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Robert Daniel Lavelle's son, Robert Elijah Riley Lavelle. He's a third grader at Dilworth Elementary School. Robert?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to it for what stands one nation under God indivisible where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job Elijah. We will now have the singing of the National Anthem. It will be led by our vocalist, Mrs. Chantel Joseph, who is an amazing performer, studio recording artist, and songwriter. Mrs. Joseph, motivation lies in spreading positivity, and she has in the midst found a nonprofit organization called the Giving Grace Foundation. Thank you. Beautiful. Thank you. We will have the invocation now offered by the Most Reverend David Zubik, Roman Catholic Bishop of the Diocese of Pittsburgh.
May we bow our heads as we ask for God's guidance. Dear God, since 1816, you have provided security for the people of the southwestern Pennsylvania with the establishment of the city of Pittsburgh. And over the course of these 205 years, you have brought forth many leaders who have worked to preserve the freedom and work for the justice of all the citizens of this area. Today, we gather together in these esteemed chambers as we ask your blessing on Teresa, Anthony, Daniel, and Erica as they are re-elected as members of the Pittsburgh City Council. Bless them and all the members of the council. In a very particular way, we also ask your blessing on our new mayor, Ed Gany. And as he is inaugurated this day, may the council work together with him so that Pittsburgh may become an even more special place. We continue to rely on your grace. You have brought us to this point. May you take us well into a future full of hope. Hear us now and help us always. Amen.
Thank you. We will now have the singing of America the Beautiful led by Officer Michael Gay. Officer Gay is a part of the Intelligence Unit for the City of Pittsburgh Bureau of Police.
Thank you so much.
You may be seated. We want to thank the ROTC cadet of the Three Rivers Battalion at the University of Pittsburgh. We also want to give thanks to Robert Elijah Riley Lavelle. Good job. Thank you, Chantel Joseph. Beautiful. And thank you so much, Mr. Gay, for that rendition. The first order of business will be the presentation of the certificates of election by council district to be read by my deputy clerk, Ashley Robinson.
does hereby certify that the election held on the second day of November 2021, Teresa Kelsmith, having received 6,090 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council District Two to a term of four years. Bill Number Two, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the second day of November 2021, Anthony Coghill, having received 5,462 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council District Six to a term of four years. And Bill Number Four, Certificate of Election from the Return Board of the County of Allegheny does hereby certify that the election held on the second day of November 2021, Erica Strausberger, having received 6,824 votes, was duly elected to the office of member of Pittsburgh City Council District Eight to a term of four years.
Thank you. We will now have the official oaths of office. We are honored to have with us this morning the Honorable Nick Martini, Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Teresa Kelsmith from Council District Number Two.
Good morning, everyone. Councilwoman, please repeat after me. I, Teresa Kelsmith,
Aye, Teresa Kelsmith.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
And the charter of this city
And the charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office
The duties of office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations, Council.
You would like to make some comments?
You can make them.
Thank you. We will now have the official oaths of office. We are honored to have with us this morning the Honorable Nick Martini, Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Teresa Kelsmith from Council District Number Two.
Morning, everyone. Councilwoman, please repeat after me. I, Teresa Kelsmith,
Aye, Teresa Kelsmith.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
And the charter of this city
And the charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office
The duties of office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations, Council.
You would like to make some comments?
You can make them.
Thank you, Nick. That was Nick's first swearing in as a judge, so thank you, Nick. I just really want to begin, I'll keep my comments brief because I know we have a lot to go through and members are all eagerly waiting for their swearing in as well. I just want to thank my family. I thank God every day for this opportunity to serve the city of Pittsburgh and our residents, and I hope that every day I do what's best and in the best interest of the residents. It is really a challenging position, especially now more than ever. Social media, anger, you know, a lot of things happening in the city and in the community and around our country really play a role in what we do every single day. And I will say that there are times when I see members and elected officials take a lot of criticism, a lot of heat for some of the things we do. So I really want to thank the people that we serve with. I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Gany, looking forward to working with you as this council and as a body, and doing what's in the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh. We have a good relationship with our county exec who's here today, Rich Fitzgerald, and I can expect that we'll continue to work well together into the future. And I want to also make sure that I thank our clerk's office and the staff and team that she puts together, our Sergeant at Arms or IMP Department, everyone who puts these meetings on for us every single week. They help us in so many ways. I don't think that we could do half of what we do had it not been for them because they really do keep us on track. So I want to thank you all for your work every single day in the city during really challenging times. And this is me being quick, by the way, okay? I do want to make sure that I mention my son TJ's here with me today, my husband Tom, who held the Bible. And we even had one Bishop Zubik, you'll be happy to know. But I want to thank Bishop Zubik for being here today as well. But with that said, I'm looking forward to working together and looking forward to our future and looking forward to a bright Pittsburgh, working together and doing what's in the best interest of our residents as we move forward together as a team. Thank you, everyone. We also have with us the Honorable Richard King, Magisterial District Judge, who will administer the oath of office to Anthony Coghill from Council District Four.
I've sworn a lot of people in here over the years. Former Councilman Jim Motznick, former Councilwoman Natalia Rudiak, Luke Ravenstall once for president, but nobody's ever had the honor of having the bishop hold that Bible, so he did it again. Could you please raise your right hand, put your left on the Bible, and repeat after me. I, Anthony Coghill,
I, Anthony Coghill.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
And the charter of this city
And the charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
I'll also be brief. First of all, I want to thank the Honorable Ricky King for swearing me in and Bishop Zubik holding the Bible for me. It really is an honor. However, our judge, he's anything but honorable off of the bench. I could tell you on the golf courses, you know, anything but honorable. Cheats, lies, and steals. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing. He's a great guy. He means a lot to our district. And with him and my other district judge, James Motznick, we work together on everything as far as, you know, what's going on in the community, what we feel the problems are, what they see in front of their bench. So when I took office, being a contractor, I looked at the fourth district almost like I look at a house. I wanted to rebuild it. I wanted to do, and that involves a lot of infrastructure, mostly infrastructure. And I've got a long list of things that we've accomplished that I'm very proud of. However, we're not finished. You know, I'm proud and honored to have four more years. In my next four years, I think we're going to focus more up on Brownsville Road in the Carrick area. I think we've got some major accomplishments in the Brookline and Beachview and other parts of the district, so that's where I feel needs the most help. So I look forward to, you know, doing good things up there. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, you know, the two most important women in my life who couldn't be here today. That's Lisa and my daughter Kelly. I always want to thank them. They're so supportive in everything I do. And let's you know that, you know, I'm heavily reliant on both of them. So I want to thank my staff, Blake, you know, Blake Plavchak, he got thrown into the role Chief of Staff kind of unexpectedly, and Blake, you've done a great job. I know I throw a lot at you and nothing but impressed. I probably don't say it enough. And also Ricky's stepdaughter Katie is also on my staff who as well does such a great job. Trust her completely in everything we do. Very thankful. I want to thank Mayor Paduto, you know, coming into the office. I really didn't have a good feel as to how well we would work together. Over the past four years, I think we've achieved many, many good things. And as much as he'll be missed, I'm looking forward to this guy, Mr. Ed Gany coming into office. We've got a Peabody guy with a Breschier guy here working together, and I'm excited about it, I will tell you. Next to that, clerk and the staff, you know, you guys really do a wonderful job. I'm heavily reliant on everything you do. And to council, I love working with you. I love fighting with you, whatever we do. But we're always, I feel, everybody brings their own skill set to this council, and I feel in the end, you know, I'm a better person with working and fighting with you at the same time, so. And I think we're going to do big things. I really do. I think we're well positioned. I have nothing but confidence in this council as to handling the difficult, you know, things that will be coming our way and be on our plate. So with that, thank you so much. I appreciate it. County Executive Fitzgerald, Rich, thank you for always being a friend. Really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
We have with us the Honorable Elliot Howsey, Judge of Court of Common, please, who will administer the oath for Robert Daniel Lavelle from Council District Six.
Raise your right hand, Councilman. Please repeat after me. I, R. Daniel Lavelle,
I, Robert Daniel Lavelle.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
And the charter of this city
Charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of office to the best of my ability.
Of office to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
I heard one good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I will also try to be as brief as possible. There are some thank yous that I must go through. First and foremost, I need to thank my family, my wife, my father's here with me, as well as those who weren't able to attend today. In order to do this job and do it well and do it successfully, it often requires long evenings, weekends, and takes you away from your family. And so you need someone at home who's also going to help out with the children when you're unable, so I thank you for that. And I just thank my family for all the support they provide. Also need to thank my staff, JD, Dan, Cassandra. Without good staff that also believe in the mission that you've put forward, it's also hard to do your job. And so I want to thank them for all the days provided. I want to thank the citizens of District Six for actually electing me back into office. I believe I've worked on your behalf as best as I can, so I thank you for entrusting me to better your lives. But also thank all the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. Representative Wheatley is sitting in the back, and he's often reminded me that although we're elected by district, we're actually sworn in to serve all the citizens of Pittsburgh. And so I thank them as a whole. Also want to thank the employees from the city of Pittsburgh. The reality is, when we get calls, we have to go through and call the actual employees of the city to get things done. And so we're relying upon them, and so they often don't get thanked enough, so I want to thank them as well. And then also to my colleagues, thank you all. It's a pleasure to work with you. As Councilman Coghill said, we don't always agree, but more times than not, we're always working, willing to work towards a compromise, and I think that's what's great about us. Representative Wheatley, I want to thank you. Many of you don't know this, but if not for Representative Wheatley, I would not be standing here right now. He called me one day when I was living in Ohio and asked if I was interested in coming to work for a councilperson. And so through his years of tutelage and his friendship, I've been able to get into this position, and I can remember, after I moved back to Pittsburgh, working on his very first campaign, door knocking alongside him. And then in return, when I ran for office, he was the first to begin door knocking with me. So I thank you, and I really look forward to working with you in the new administration. And then lastly, Representative Mayor-elect Ed Gany. Congratulations on a historic election, and I wish you nothing but the best in the years to come. What I will tell you is, the message that you articulated during your campaign, I believe can absolutely be implemented, and I believe it can be done in partnership with this body. The other night before going to bed, I was talking with my children about the parable of the mustard seed in the Bible, and I would argue, or suggest maybe, that over the last two, three, four years, this council has planted that mustard seed. The issues that you've articulated about inclusivity and equity, diversity, reimagining, policing, the services that you really want to bring to this city, I believe we've done the hard work of implementing that seed. And now through your administration, we have an opportunity to collectively see it grow and become phenomenal and really create the city for all that you've articulated. And so I look forward to working with you. I believe I can speak on behalf of my colleagues that we all look collectively forward to working with you and implementing your vision that will include and ensure we do indeed have a city for all. So thank you all, and thank you all for being here today.
Lastly, we have the Honorable Mary McGinley, Judge of the Court of Common, please, who will administer the oath of office to Erica Strausberger from Council District Eight.
Councilperson Strausberger, let me just first congratulate you and take a moment to congratulate the citizens and those who work in Pittsburgh because they have someone in you who hears all voices, not just the voices of a few. So I congratulate you, and it's my pleasure to administer the oath of office to you. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Erica Strausberger,
I, Erica Strausberger.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
And the charter of this city
And the charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office
The duties of office.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Please bear with me because I did, I did write a speech. Thank you, Judge McGinley. What an honor it is to have you here today to swear me in for my second term on Pittsburgh City Council. This particular moment has given me the happy excuse to reflect back to my election and swearing in nearly four years ago. Judge McGinley, who was not yet a judge at the time, wrote me the kindest congratulatory letter, and the people of Allegheny County are really fortunate to have you as a judge, and I'm fortunate to have you as a neighbor and a friend. Thank you. And during times of joy, we also recall times of sorrow. Judge Eugene Strausberger, uncle to my husband, who swore me in last time charming everyone with his unexpected humor, whose ties to the city of Pittsburgh and to 414 Grand Street dated back to his time as an assistant city solicitor in our very own law department, is not here today. We lost him earlier this year, and today amid the celebration, we mourn his absence. We miss you, Uncle Gene. Please allow me to thank all my supporters, my amazing family, my friends, my terrific government and campaign staff, past and present, my colleagues on city council, our former mayor Bill Paduto and his staff, and my mentors and teachers. I am abundantly grateful for all of you who have given me the privilege who have given me the privilege of serving in this position, and it have worked shoulder to shoulder with me to accomplish so much in these last four years. In April of 2018, in this exact spot, I said the following words. I expect the next four years to be hard, challenging, interesting, exhilarating, and probably exhausting. How right I was. And yet, how little I knew of what lay ahead. Funny how that works. Our world has changed so dramatically these last four years. The global pandemic has caused even our most local of priorities to shift. And because of the confluence of one pandemic with another global pandemic, which is record economic inequality that we face worldwide, we see the cascading effect of it all through extreme polarization, a rise in extremism and xenophobia, and a flurry of policies at the local, state, and federal levels perpetuated by the haves, as a last gasp to hold on to what they already have and have had for hundreds of years. So that's the bad news. At the local level, we have the privilege of representing the public in among the most hands-on of ways. And it's a beautiful thing. And it's the best part about this particular office. However, I'll be honest, the responsibility we bear can feel heavy at times. The world's challenges often end up on our doorstep in convoluted ways. And we're armed with, well, what the tools of a local city council, which often don't feel like enough. And that's why if there's one lesson I've learned in my first term, it's just how imperative it is to resist the temptation to do this work alone. On City Council and a body of nine colleagues, you learn that lesson quickly. And just as this City Council will stand together these next four years, we will accomplish nothing if we don't work hand in glove with incoming Mayor Ed Gany, whose historic inauguration we celebrate today. Congratulations, Mayor-elect. Equally important is the voice of the people, the public, from activists to community leaders to the youth who are beacons of light for so many of us, to our businesses and nonprofit leaders. We will accomplish nothing without our community of people. And to the extent possible, in order to make real substantive change, we must build a vision for this region with our elected leaders at the county, like County Executive Rich Fitzgerald is here today, state and federal levels. We can't afford to work in silos anymore. And to the extent I can, I pledge to be a bridge builder. That said, we must not only be carpenters, but also gardeners, digging down deep to get at the root causes of our biggest challenges, tending the soil, trimming the dead branches that no longer serve us. The challenges before us are incredibly complex. Band-aid solutions will no longer suffice. So yes, we will aim to curb plastic bag use in this city, but we'll do it with an eye toward one day transforming our region into one that boasts the highest number of inclusive union jobs in the clean energy economy that improves the quality of our air, water, and land. And yes, we will support the construction of new affordable homes. But we'll do it while also working to dismantle the policies of our past that have segregated our city racially and economically, and replace them with policies that further our neighbors' right to self-determination. And yes, we will support food distribution events in our district, but also aim higher toward a Pittsburgh where work is available, accessible, and well-paid for all. And yes, we'll continue to reimagine our public safety to protect constituents of all colors and creeds. But we will also work with our partners in our public schools and our universities to make sure all our children grow up not only feeling safe, but feeling like they have a future here. And yes, we will host hearings and town hall meetings. But in order to forge a more perfect union, we will strive to make our processes even more transparent and our citizens even more engaged. Council, the mayor, you, me, all of us, we're in this together, tackling the hard problems and complex issues with diligence, hard work, compassion, and listening. We are in the midst of a history-making moment. These don't come along very often. With great sorrow, we can find joy. And in the midst of great tumult, there is tremendous opportunity. To close and to sum up this sentiment better than anyone, I'll leave you with an excerpt from the nationally renowned youth poet laureate Amanda Gorman's poem, "The Miracle of Morning." We'll observe how the burdens braid by humankind are also the moments that make us humans kind. Let every dawn find us courageous, brought closer, heating the light before the fight is over. When this ends, we'll smile sweetly, finally seeing, in testing times, we became the best of beings. Thank you.
And that the re-elected members of council have been duly sworn in. The deputy clerk will call the roll. He didn't hear you.
Here.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the 142nd Council of the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations to all. The next order of business is the nomination and election of the President of Council. What is your pleasure?
Madam Clerk.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is my absolute honor and my deepest pleasure to renominate Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith to be our president for a second term.
Teresa Kell Smith has been nominated. Any other nominations? Any other nominations for president? Any other nominations? I consider the nomination closed. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I.
I can't hear her.
You're not on the mic, probably.
Hi.
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 If that's me, it's I, but we cannot hear at all what's going on.
I for me too, but we can't hear her call the roll, call the names.
Hi. I mean, here.
Hi.
Hi.
Eyes have it. And Mrs. Teresa Kell Smith is elected again as President of the City Council. Will Councilmember Teresa Kell Smith please step forward for the oath of office? The Honorable Nick Martini will administer the oath of office to the President of Council.
Councilwoman, congratulations again.
Thank you.
On being re-elected as Council President. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Teresa Kell Smith.
I, Teresa Kell Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter of this city.
And the Charter of this city.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of office.
Of the President of City Council.
President of City Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Congratulations, Council President Smith.
Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Teresa Kell Smith, President of City Council. Thank you. Awesome. I want to first thank City Council. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. You really were really difficult to follow because you have been so amazing as a Council President for six years. And so I'm thankful to have your leadership, your guidance, and to serve with Councilman Burgess and Councilman Lavelle and the leadership team has been really amazing. They know so much. They're so wonderful what they do. But I am fortunate to work with all these council members. And I mean, together, we really are a team. And I don't think people realize how this council is so different in so many ways. We are partly the most senior council we've had in recent memory. We're out of Act 47. We get along well. And there's, I think for us, all those things make us a strong council. But I think what's going to make us stronger is working together with our new mayor for the betterment of the city as a team and realizing that we're all in this together. So I'm looking forward to the next coming years. I'm thankful, my granddaughter's on her way, by the way, and I can't wait for her to come up here. She's at home always time pretending she's us or Madam Clerk. So we're going to get on with the business of council. And but if she comes, I'm interrupting this meeting, okay? But our next order of business is the reorganization of council. Just get my paper here. And so proceed with reorganization and make appointments of chairpersons for the Standing Committee meetings of City Council as follows. Committee on Finance and Law, Committee on Finance and Law, Daniel Lavelle. Oh, I'm sorry, you also have to vote for eight. We'll get to that. Okay. Public Safety Services, Councilman Corey O'Connor. Public Works, Councilman Anthony Coghill. Human Resources, Councilman Bruce Kraus. And we expect to change that once some things happen in council. But right now, that's where it is. Land Use and Economic Development, Bobby Wilson. Urban Recreation, Reverend Burgess. Performance and Asset Management, Erica Strausberger. Inner Governmental Affairs, Councilwoman Deb Gross. And hearings is myself. And so we also will appoint the Board of Trustees of the Carnegie Institute of Library, including the Carnegie Science Center. Councilman Kraus, you have been an amazing person to serve as trustee of the board. So I want to thank you for your service and add you to that board again. And Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Councilman Lavelle, and Councilwoman Gross will also all be added again. Thank you all for your service. You've done a great job in serving on the library board. Okay, next, we'll have the nominations of elections for Council President pro temp. What is your pleasure?
I'm President.
Councilman Lavelle.
I would like to nominate Reverend Burgess to continue to serve as President pro temp.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? The clerk, please call, will close the nominations. Councilman Burgess is the nominee. Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Reverend Burgess.
I'm like.
Mr. Coghill.
I.
Ms. Gross.
I.
Mr. Kraus.
I.
Mr. Lavelle.
I.
Mr. O'Connor.
I.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
I.
Mrs. Strausberger.
I.
Mr. Wilson.
I.
Nine I's. Thank you. Congratulations, Councilman Burgess.
Looking forward to serving with you again. I would like to entertain a motion that the rules of the proceedings of council be adopted as the rules of this council. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion's approved. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to, sorry, I have a lot of notes up here. We are going to invite County Executive Rich Fitzgerald to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you. And congratulations, Council President. Well-deserved and well-earned. I also want to congratulate the four returning members of council, Councilwoman Kell Smith, Councilman Coghill, Councilman Lavelle, and Councilwoman Strausberger. In a changing and challenging time, the fact that your constituents have decided to send you back, it tells a lot about the work that you have done and the confidence that people have with you. This is my sixth time coming to this august body as County Executive. And I can tell you, the first time in masks. I don't know if they did this back in the Spanish flu pandemic, if they swore council in in masks in 2018. But it's been challenging. So when I was here two years ago, little did we know that two months later, we would be challenged with something that none of us could ever foresee, but have tried to weather. And I want to thank you for your service and how well you have managed and helped manage for not just the city, but for this entire county and this entire region. I also want to thank our distinguished jurists who are here today, as well as Bishop Zubik, for their continued work. And you have my commitment that at the county level, across the street, we will continue to work with you. It's also an exciting time, as we're going to be swearing in a new mayor. The mayor of this region, the mayor of the city that I live in, the city that we all love, and the city that we all serve. And working with Mayor Gany, Mayor-elect Gany, soon to be Mayor Gany in a couple of hours, working with this body and working with all of us is something that we're going to continue to do. Again, these challenging times give us great opportunities. We know this is a changing city with many new people moving in because people find it so wonderful and desirable in the city that we love. But during these times, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Strausberger and others, equity, equity in housing, equity in education, equity in employment, quality of life, how we deal with sustainability, all of these challenges are things that we must continue to work on. And I know you all will come to the plate and come to the table, making sure that we continue to do this. Also would be remiss if I didn't congratulate the remaining five who weren't sworn in today, but were two years ago, for your continued work and your continued success in challenging times to make this city everything we know it can be, the city we love and the city we want to continue to be a city for all. Congratulations to all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, County Executive Fitzgerald. And with that said, I'm really excited to welcome up our Mayor-elect Ed Gany for some remarks and happy that you could be here. And thank you to your wife, Michelle, and your team in the back for being here.
It's Councilwoman Strausberger, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Coghill, President, Councilwoman President, Teresa Kell Smith. Congratulations. You know, I always say when you win, it's not just that you win, it's that your district wins. Because it's a statement about how your district feels about you. And because I've had an opportunity to actually do a tour with each one of you in your district, I see the way that your district relies on you. I see the issues that are important to your district. They put on you, you put on us, and together, that's how we build a city. I always tell people, the amazing thing we got between council and that chambers over there, the mayor's chambers, is that the beauty of all this is that we have issues and problems. Because without no issues and problems, there wouldn't be any disparity. And if we didn't have disparity, we wouldn't have opportunity. And the fact that we have opportunity to build the best out of each one of you, each one of your districts, that speaks about a relationship of building bridges throughout this region that doesn't help a district, but helps the overall city of Pittsburgh. And so I look forward to working with you. I look forward to solving problems with you. And I look forward to bringing a prosperity that involves all of us. Because together, we grow this city. us. Because together, we grow this city. Congratulations. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. We will now have our benediction also by Reverend, Most Reverend Bishop David Zubik. Bishop Zubik?
And for our benediction, we'll use a very special blessing from the Old Testament that is so important to both the Jewish tradition and the Christian tradition. May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord at his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord look upon you kindly and always give you his peace, goodwill, and love. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Bishop Zubik. And just in time, my granddaughter's here. She's going to come up here. This is one of my youngest. This is one of my youngest granddads. Come up here, bring her up here. One of my youngest granddads. When I first started, I, when I first started, I had hair, Bruce Kraus did not. My mother was not a hundred, she is now. I had a couple of grandkids. I now have the eighth one on the way. And this is my youngest one who watches us sometimes at home and pretends she's us. And she'll sit at the podium, well, she'll pretend she's at the podium and say, next speaker, please. So I had to bring her up. This is Natalie. But that said, we are having a reception in the back. I want her to hold the Bible for my swearing in. But I'm so thankful that they're here. But we have our reception in the back, and we welcome all of you to join us in the back. We have some food from Cafe 412, a restaurant in the West End, and we hope that you'll enjoy it. And we hope that you'll join us in the back. I also want to add before I wrap this up that I want to thank my staff who have been tremendous and helped me in so many ways. And our employees in the city of Pittsburgh, we have the best of the best. And I just want to thank you all for everything that you do. With that said, I can have a motion to adjourn the meeting, and please join us in the back. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.